We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to public comments, I just wanted to note a couple of quick things. One is that Dr. Costanzo is here as acting superintendent in the absence of Dr. Adamowski, who is successfully recovering from knee surgery. He's had a knee replacement. He's been sitting in his hospital bed sending emails about school business. He expects to be back by the December 5 meeting. Another thing I wanted to note is that we're going to withdraw two items from the agenda. Item 5.4, approval of Janine Goss as Director K-12 Humanities. And the other one is actually listed under approval of personnel actions. That's on the list of personnel actions. We're withdrawing the appointment of Craig Feller as K-12 Director of STEM. Those are being tabled to a future meeting to work out some issues with the NASA Union on those positions. So those two items are withdrawn. As I said, they'll come up at a subsequent meeting. All right. We will now proceed to the public comments portion of the agenda.
There are no one signed up for public comments?
No one signed up for public comments? Okay. That's easy. Comments are first. Yeah. All right. Before we start the work session, I had a couple other things I wanted to say tonight. First, we have three members of the Board whose terms are ending and will be leaving us. Sherrell Harris, Artie Kasimis, and Shirley Mosby. Artie is here. I wanted to publicly recognize these Board members for their service to the community. Sherrell's case for one term. Artie's been here a lot longer than that. How many terms? Full terms or?
No, not full terms.
One and a half?
Yeah.
One and a half terms. And, you know, I wanted to thank you personally for the work that's involved. You know, I sometimes find myself chuckling when you'll see these comments on Facebook. How much do these people get paid? And the answer is absolutely nothing. And there are people on the Board who put in hundreds and hundreds of hours of time. And I know, Artie, you in particular, one of our busier ones, and you've got so many liaisons, I don't know how you manage to fit them all in. And do great things, and very often behind the scenes. I mean, I think of all the sports things that you do and, you know, setting up things like, you know, Yankees camps and stuff like that. It takes a lot of work. And, you know, I met once with John McCain years ago, and I mentioned to him that my wife had been a member of the Board of Education. And he said, "Oh, you have my sympathy." Because it is, you know, the most thankless job.
Sherrell!
No? No? Come on. You're still a member of the Board.
You are.
I was just praising you and Shirley and Artie and your service.
I've got my glasses on. That and a thousand.
You do tremendous amounts of work.
Thank you.
For which you're often rewarded with, you know, criticisms and attacks and, you know, people hiding behind, you know, phony names on Facebook. Or not Facebook, you can't do it there, but on other places. Firing away at us. And it is, you know, very often a thankless job. And so I wanted to say, forgive you that thanks.
Thank you.
And Sherrell, you, and Shirley as well, thank you for all the time and effort spent on the biggest and most important part of the city of Norwalk's government. So, thank you.
Can I add a comment, Mike?
Absolutely.
I also want to personally thank Artie. Artie and I have known each other, worked. I feel, as I was mentioning to others as well, when you're on the Board, we consider it's a job, right? It's like a second job. You take it seriously. You have a vested interest because this is what you want to do and you want to make a difference. And I've worked with Artie for many years, as well as Sherrell and Shirley, and it's, you know, it's bittersweet, but we've enjoyed, you know, working with you. And I think that we'll always remain in contact. And I think you've done a lot of great things for students in our schools. So, very much appreciated what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. And I just wanted to kind of piggyback on this as well. I'm going to start with Sherrell, my fellow Taurus.
Same birthday!
Exactly. It really has been a pleasure getting to work with you. And specifically, I've also, yes. Right? At least you're down to one now. So, I thoroughly appreciate everything that you do outside of the Board as well. You know, getting to work with you on the lit crawl was really fantastic. And also being a partner with you going forward at the library.
That was our theme music.
Exactly. It was the farewell. Ms. Mosby's not here, however, you know, really getting to work with her on the Policy Committee and hear her points of view from a first-person perspective has been, you know, something that's helped me grow. And Mr. Kasimis, I've enjoyed working with you on a lot of different things, but I'm really looking forward to taking over closing the meeting for me. So, I will hold that strong for you. You got this tonight.
He's got one more.
Got one more.
But truly what Mike said about all of your participation in all your liaison shifts, it's really staggering to, you know, know what this role is now and watch somebody really achieve all of that. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, Artie, real quick. Please. I've had a rewarding time here. And back in 2009, when I first decided to run for the Board is because I wanted to bring positive change. And the reason why I'm leaving is because I feel we've done that. And for me, it's mission accomplished. And I think of leaving in good hands. I've done a lot. I was on facilities with Jack.
Yeah.
So long ago.
Back in the day, right?
Back in the day. It was just me and Jack going to meetings for a while. But, you know, I did that school safety committee. You know, we've secured all our schools, and that was a lot of work.
We started with not even having locks that would work and look where we are now.
That's right. Yeah. The first thing we did was number all of our doors. You know, we did a lot. Athletics, we've doubled participation over the last six years. Curriculum, I had a pleasure working with the curriculum directors. And it's been, policy, of course, with.
Because we started out, three of us.
Yeah. Me, you, and Steve, and Coloressi. So, it's been great. I didn't expect to go through somebody who's superintendent, though. It's been a challenge.
That surprised all of us.
You know. But I just want to thank all of you. You were great colleagues, and I've just had a great time. Don't make me come back.
All right.
Shirley?
I'm more of a writer than a speaker. But I will say, when I was first asked to run for the Board, I thought, you know, I do for children outside of the Board, so I wasn't really interested. But I have to say, it has been a rewarding experience. I honestly didn't feel until the third year that I really knew enough to do anything. You know, it's a lot.
It's been a learning curve.
It's a lot. And I was just going through the emails from 2014 until today. And there's been a lot of work that's been done. And the thing is, like, we all have different personalities and different, we come from different walks of life. But, you know, it has been a rewarding experience to just watch the interaction. There's some things I think we could have done a lot better, but I think this new Board will carry it, will carry it on. So, I will still be at the meetings, still be sending emails behind the scenes. So, maybe not all of them, but I still have a vested interest. So, anyway, but thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
And to Shirley and Yvette, who are not here. Thank you both for all of your work. They're both very passionate, really caring. So, thanks to them, too.
Thank you, Sherrell. The, thank you all very much. I also wanted to just announce that I'm not going to be seeking reelection as Chair of Board next week. Five years has been enough. I think serving half a decade in this position has certainly been a unique experience. But I feel very much like Artie, that, you know, during those five years, we've done tremendous things. I mean, we took a school system that was pretty much sort of running on autopilot for a good 20 years. We now have Strategic Operating Plan that we're halfway through. We have a special ed rebuilding plan. We're building the first new school in 46 years. We have a whole facilities plan. That's a lot. And so I felt very much like Artie, that with this accomplished, I can hand the reins over to a new Chair who takes over the school system with the momentum running in the correct direction. And I wanted to, I found an absolutely perfect statement of sort of where I was those years ago and where it is now, written by Mr. Kasimis about the time that we both got in here, a year or so apart. Where we were, were grades were down, graduation rates were down, the achievement gap was widening, expenses were out of control, and we were losing Superintendent after Superintendent. I'm just quoting him. "I've had the pleasure of working with a great group of individuals, and together we've brought that change. Grades are up. Graduation rates are at all-time high. Achievement gap's been reduced by over 30%. We were nationally recognized for this. We've hired a top-notch financial officer, and our finances are finally under control. We have a great Superintendent who's leading the schools. We have many new programs within our schools, like International Baccalaureate, the NECA, Norwalk High. Our schools are safer than they've ever been. Our curriculum has been redesigned with more rigor. Athletic participation's doubled over the last six years. We're building two new schools in Norwalk for the first time in decades." That's a heck of a record.
Sure is.
And everybody on the Board who was part of making that happen gets a pat on the back. And I feel that at this point, I've helped to contribute to that, and we've got some really good momentum going. So, time for me to step back and let somebody else take that baton. And anyway, my wife told me if I ran for a sixth term, she'd strangle me in my sleep. So, this is also self-preservation, and I expect I will be able to live for the remaining two years of my term.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. I also wanted to mention that I've decided not to run for another term, actually isn't term, but to be on the Executive Committee as Secretary. I've been on the Executive Committee for the past five years, since 2012, which is really a long time, as Secretary, as well as Vice Chair. And it's been amazing. We've worked all together in a bipartisan manner, and the Executive Committee has also worked really well. But I feel the same way as Mike. I didn't have this prepared, but, you know, I feel exactly, exactly how we all feel here.
Our decision is to take it.
We've done some amazing things, and I've said this, in the past couple of years that we have, in the eight years that I've been on the Board. The Strategic Operating Plan, School Governance Council, Reforming Special Education, lots of great things are happening in Norwalk Public Schools. To me, it's a really exciting time to be a part of Norwalk Public Schools. But feeling the same way as Mike does, it's time to hand the baton over to someone else after five years. And I feel I've worked hard on all the policies, everything that we've done, but specifically as Secretary, working with the Executive Committee and really transforming our spotlight section of our agenda, and really finding leads and finding stories of our students. Not only our students doing amazing things, but also our staff members, our teachers, our paraprofessionals. We've got a great cohesive group of staff members in Norwalk Public Schools, and they should always be honored and spotlighted. So, I wanted to thank everybody for the past five years being on the Executive Board.
Thanks, Artie. All right.
Anyone else?
Anybody else resigning?
Well, we set to find humor, right? Always some humor.
We will now move on to the work session, State Budget Reconciliation, which a few weeks ago, we thought might be a catastrophic disaster. I remember saying to my wife, because I had told her, you know, a while back that I wasn't going to go for Chairman, I said, "Please don't let me go out with, you know, a $6 million cut to my budget." And fortunately, the state finally got it back together, and we have some small adjustments to make, but we're going to survive this, I think, intact. And Tom, take us through it.
Sure. Frank, did you want to make any comments, or should I? No, only that Tom has worked tirelessly on getting us into a position where we would be well-prepared to sustain a significant state budget cut. As it turns out, it looks like we're looking at about 10% to 11% cut in PSD and Alliance, which he has positioned us to, that actually is a better outcome than what we were expecting. We don't have the actual number in, but he took a defensive position of 20%, and we're faring better than we thought we would. But Tom will take us through the details of that now. Sure. I think we can breathe the sigh of relief, certainly, because we really were on pins and needles for a long period of time, unsure whether or not the PSD grant was going to be reauthorized at all, and unsure whether the Alliance District Grant was going to be reauthorized. So, the grants that I'm going to talk about here are listed, the first eight that are bolded are the ones that I'm going to talk about. Education Cost Sharing Grant, the Alliance District Grant, the Priority School District Grant, the Excess Cost Grant, the CGS Magnet School Grants, Adult Education, Family Resource Center Grants, and Commissioners Network Grants. We do receive other grants that are not bolded below that I'm not going to go into tonight, but there's no significant changes there. And they're either, the major items really are federal pass-through grants, Title I, II, and III, and IDEA grants, as well as the National School Lunch Program, and a few other miscellaneous grants. Again, we have not received word of any changes at this point in any of those grants, so we don't think there's any need to make any adjustments in those areas. So, let's just look at those top eight grants. And I believe there's copies of the presentation in back, if you can't read the numbers. And I think all the members of the Board have the presentation in front of you. So, what you see here in the middle yellow column is the final state adopted budget. These are the statewide appropriations, so the State of Connecticut appropriations for each of these grants. So, what you see on the first line is the ECS Grant, which includes, rolled into that statewide number, includes the Alliance District Grant. And it's important to make the distinction, because I think there still is some confusion, perhaps, in the general public. People talk about the ECS Grant as being an education grant, when in fact, most of the ECS Grant goes directly to the municipality, or to, in our case, to the city of Norwalk. Its intent is to help support education costs and reduce the amount that the city has to raise from property taxes to support education. But it's not money that comes directly to us. What does come directly to us, and the next schedule will outline it for Norwalk, what does come directly to us is the Alliance District Grant. And so, in this case, the statewide appropriation was reduced from just over $2,277 million down to $1,986 million, which is a reduction of 2% statewide. In Norwalk's case, well, I'll talk to Norwalk in a few months. So, let me just go through the rest of the numbers here. The Priority School District Grant actually consists of three components that you see listed here. There's the base Priority School District Grant, which the state has approved an appropriation for next year of $31.6 million statewide compared to the adjusted amount that was distributed last year of $35.8 million. So, there was a reduction statewide of $31.6 million, or 11.8% reduction statewide in the base PSD Grant. And then there are two supplemental PSD Grants. One's for Extended School Hours, which has a statewide appropriation, which is sort of hardcoded into state statute currently at $2,994, and that has not changed for next year. And then there is a third portion of the PSD Grant, which helps support summer school, which is, again, sort of hardcoded into state statute at $3.5 million. And again, that has not changed in the statewide allocation. The next grant on this page is the Special Education Excess Cost Reimbursement Grant, and there was a 5.2% increase in the statewide appropriation for this grant. It's important to understand that this is a reimbursement grant. It reimburses our high-cost special education expenses. High cost is defined as anything over four and a half times our average per pupil cost. So, it amounts to, in our case, about any cost for a single student that exceeds about $78,000 is reimbursed to the district by the state government through this grant program. However, the reimbursement, the statewide amount of money is set for next year at $142.5 million. So, the state will receive information from all of the school districts around the state on what their, what the expenses associated with their high-cost students were. And then they may make reductions, proportional reductions, to the grant that we receive such that the state won't spend more than the total amount that's been budgeted. So, in other words, they may give us less than we ask for if everyone asks for, you know, 10% or 15% more, because their costs are going up by 10% or 15%, but the state grant has only gone up by 5.2%. Then they would have to reduce the amount they distribute proportionally. But on the main, we take this as good news, that the state has increased the amount of money for the excess cost grant. We were concerned at one point that they may make significant reductions to the excess cost grant. So, you know, we think we're in good shape overall with respect to excess cost, but we won't know the real number until we actually submit a request, and every other school district in the state, excuse me, submits their request, and we'll know what the actual reimbursement is going to be. Good news is that the initial submissions on this get submitted to the state in early December, and so we will have numbers, you know, by January. We should have a pretty good estimate of what that figure is going to be. And we are in a good position. The district has excellent records now in terms of what our high-cost students are costing us, so we're going to be able to submit very accurate information to the state for the December filing. The third grant I just draw attention to here is this Magnet School Operating and Transportation Grants. We do receive money under this grant program to support the Global, Center for Global Studies. And there has been an increase in the appropriation of 4.8%. We are uncertain at this point if that means that our grant will go up, or if there are additional Magnet Schools that potentially could get allocation. On the second page, when I talk about our distribution, we've assumed a small increase in that grant, but we'll have to see, because we have not yet received any sort of official word from the state on what that allocation is going to be. Adult Education, I put on here simply because it's listed as on all the reports that the state puts out. It is one of the grants that usually gets listed. We do get a small amount of money under that grant program. There's been no increase or decrease there, so we don't expect any significant impact. The Family Resource Center Grant, I put on here because it does have a potential implication for us. There has been a reduction in the statewide appropriation for the Family Resource Center Grant from about $7.9 million down to $5.8 million, which is a 26.5% decrease. And that number was arrived at, there's currently 78 or 79 Family Resource Centers around the state of Connecticut. We happen to have two of them in the Norwalk Public School System, and a third one located at Charter Side-by-Side School, although I believe that the charter allocation, I don't believe is in this $5.8 million appropriation. The state, in approving the state budget, wrote into legislation a proviso that for community, the, going from $79 million down to 58, or 5 point, I'm sorry, $7.9 million down to $5.8 million, was predicated on reducing the number of Family Resource Centers statewide by 16 Family Resource Centers. And so what the state legislation now contains is a provision that says, "Any school district that has more than one Family Resource Center shall close one of those centers by December 31, 2017." We have two Family Resource Centers, so that would certainly indicate that it looks like one of our Family Resource Centers would have to close. However, a number of school districts with the lengthy delay in getting a state budget passed, a number of school districts essentially pulled the plug on their Family Resource Centers back in September or before.
preemptively, yes.
And so, the official at the state who administers this program has advised everyone to submit your applications, and we've submitted applications for both Fox Run and NARMAC, and we will see what happens, because we've been advised we should submit applications. It may be that if only 58 Family Resource Centers submit applications, perhaps they will all get funded. We don't, we don't know the answer to that. But for now, we're assuming that it's more likely than not that one of our Family Resource Centers will, will have to close. So, that's probably the only sort of negative news out of the state budget. The grant itself had been, last year, we received $103,000 for each of our Family Resource Centers, and the budget next year includes $100,000 for the 58 statewide. And the last one I've put on the list is the Commissioners Network Grant, and I put this on here just simply to provide information to the Board and to the city about this particular grant. Now, this particular grant has continued next year. There is a reduction in it. Norwalk, and I'll move on to the next page. In this case, Norwalk is not expecting, and was not expecting, to get a Commissioners Network Grant for fiscal year 1718. We received one previously, that its originally, its original intent was a three-year grant. We received that three-year commitment and actually got some additional funding from the state for a fourth year. So, this is not a grant that we expected to continue. It's not one that we intended to rely on to support any programs in 1718. But I put it on the list simply to demonstrate to the city that there is a reduction year over year in, in state revenue coming into the Board of Education. So, this next schedule here is the exact same revenues, but for the Norwalk School District alone, in the case of the first-line item, the Education Equalization. This is the payment to the city, and the good news here for the city is that the city's grant has essentially stayed flat at $10,095,000, which is what the city had expected the ECS Grant was going to be, and that's what they had budgeted for the ECS Grant. So, again, that doesn't come directly to us, but that does help the city of Norwalk support the educational program of the city. Then the next one down is the ECS Alliance District Grant. And the good news here is, the indication from the state is that we can expect our Alliance Grant to remain flat at the amount that we received in fiscal year 1617 at $1,148,000. And in building our budget plan for the current fiscal year, we had actually assumed that we were going to take a little bit of a haircut on this grant. So, this is certainly good news for the school district. I do point out here, if you look in the orange column on the left, that is the variance compared to the original state budget for 1617. And so what you see is during the year, last year, the original budget for the Alliance Grant had been set at $1,398,000. And we, in fact, took a $250,000 cut in that grant last year. So, again, this is really for helping to point out to the city that the Board of Education has taken some reductions in state grants over the years, even though, at this point, on balance, we're quite happy with the results of where we're ending up on the state budget. But that's in part because we had planned, exactly, we had planned for it. So, the next grant, and this is the reason I put the, made reference to the CGS program, because last year, we also received an additional supplement, and this is certainly, you know, additional money that was secured by our legislative delegation. And I know that Senator Duff was involved in, in making this $200,000 available for the district in 1516 and 1617. We did not expect that grant to continue in 1718. There wasn't, you know, an expectation it would continue. But it does represent a reduction, again, year over year in state funding coming into the district. The Magnet School Operating Grant, again, there was a statewide increase, which would translate to us for about an additional $98,000. We're waiting to see if that turns out to really be the case, but based on the initial numbers, we think there's, you know, at least some reasonably good chance that we will get that additional $98,000. So, that helps offset part of the reduction in the $200,000, if, if in fact, that comes to pass. The Priority School District number here, we do not have. The Priority School District number here, we do not have an actual number yet from the state of Connecticut, so I want to put a caution flag around this, this number because it is not a firm, hard number. We have simply taken the 11.8 percent statewide reduction and said, "That's the reduction that we'll, you know, assume that we're going to see." Now, we do know in talking with officials at the state that there are, there is discussion at the state level about a few communities possibly coming out of the PSD grant program, but there's also discussion about a few school districts possibly coming into the PSD grant program. Norwalk does not look to be one of the districts that's at any risk of coming out of the PSD grant program. But, so our estimate is just that at this point. It's an estimate, and, you know, we think it's a reasonable estimate. We've got no reason to think it's going to be way off from this number, but again, until we get actual word from the state, we can't say with certainty. The state has indicated they expect a decision, an allocation on this coming out within the next week or two, is what they have told us, so we should know fairly soon what, what our final number is. And then the Extended School Hours Grant and the Summer School Grant, which are those additional components of the PSD grant, remain flat for us at $213,000 and $252,000. The excess cost reimbursement, I explained how that works, and based on the statewide increase in funding, as well as based on the information that we have gathered in terms of the number of high-cost students that we have, that we believe are going to exceed that $78,000 per student threshold, we believe we will collect $4,874,000 at the current time. The Adult Ed Grant is essentially flat. Family Resource Center Grant, I talked about earlier, and so we do have a reduction there, going from $206,000 down to $100,000 to support one family resource center. And again, I talked about the Commissioner's Network Grant, which was an expected phase out of that grant for us. Just to highlight a little bit more on the Priority School District Grant and why we have sort of put so much emphasis on it, as you can see from this, this is the statewide allocation of the Priority School District Grants, and this is the one grant that Norwalk makes out very well on in comparison to many other municipalities that are priority school districts. And there is a reason for that because there is in fact written in the state statute, a provision that says, "After going through the regular allocation formula, the sixth largest city in the state of Connecticut, which just happens to be Norwalk, gets an additional $2,270,000." So we are trying to confirm that that language did not somehow disappear from statute. We don't believe it did. The Budget Implementer Bill was 900 pages long, and I did a search on it, and I couldn't find any record that it was eliminated, but obviously, if there were any changes there, that would be a major concern for us. But as of, you know, as you can see here, Norwalk getting 3.9 million is certainly, you know, a favorable number compared to how we get treated generally with respect to ECS and many other grants. So just not to talk entirely about numbers, just to take a moment and, and just reiterate how we use these funds and the changes. It's important to remember, we have changed how we use these funds over the last two years pretty substantially. So out of the Alliance District Grant, we're funding six and 1/2 curriculum and instructional site directors. We fund another one and 1/2 from other places within our budget for a total of eight CISDs. And the PSD Grant, and this is where there's been substantial changes, because you'll remember, you can see there's one of the, the last item on this list is sort of the legacy of the old way, where you see 10 percent of the kindergarten teacher salaries, and our intention is to move that out of this grant for next year, in next year's budget. So what this grant has allowed us to do, of course, is all of the things that have moved the needle in terms of student achievement, you know, the interventionists at the elementary level, the reading interventionists at the middle school level, expanding summer learning opportunities, math and literacy coach, Read 180, Math 180, and System 44, and Achieve 3000, all the professional development that goes along with all of these major new initiatives that have been implemented over the last few years. Support for middle school redesigns has been funded from the PSD Grant, and the development of the district's pipeline, talent pipeline, the Relay and Emerging Leaders Program is funded from here, along with ELL extra classes. So these are really important initiatives that, that we're funding from this PSD Grant, and it's because we moved those other items that were sort of crowding out all the money, the security guards that were in there up until this current year budget, and the kindergarten teachers, and all those other expenses. It's because we moved those out that we were able to both accommodate these new initiatives and, as we're looking at the state budget situation, figure out, okay, we can afford to assume some lower amount of revenue coming in from those grants without it being, you know, an impossible situation for us. So sort of wrapping it up, where we're at, and there are some action items that, that we will ask you to take, or at least one. The Alliance District Grant remains flat compared to the amount we received in 1617. It is 200,000, or 250,000, less than the original budget. We do expect to receive 1.148 million. There is a wrinkle here, and I, Dr. Costanzo and I met yesterday with Mayor Rilling, City Finance Director Bob Barron, and Leisha King, and one of the issues we talked about was the, this wrinkle relative to the Alliance District Grant. And the wrinkle is this, when we were operating under the Governor's Executive Order Budget, which rolled together both the Alliance funding and the ECS funding together, the state actually distributed what is now 25 percent of our Alliance District Grant was sent directly to the city in the form of an ECS payment. And so we had a discussion yesterday with the city, and there would have been two ways to address this, and the City Finance Director has agreed that the city can reclassify that revenue as an Alliance District Grant revenue through a journal entry and simply move that money over to the Board of Education Grants Fund. So that means we don't have to ask for an appropriation, special appropriation. So I think that's certainly, certainly good news. Priority School District has been cut 11.8 percent statewide. Again, we do not know what our allocation will be, but if we use that as a guide, it translates into a reduction of $461,000 for us. A reduction of $461,000, obviously, over the long term, does have implications about how much we can afford to do and how much we can accomplish with the money that's available. However, because we employed those conservative budgeting practices and because we moved the security guard expenses, security expenses out of the PSD Grant and into the local budget for the 1718 year, we do not need to resort to making mid-year budget cuts to our local budget, nor do we need to ask the city specifically for an appropriation to, to make up a loss of PSD grant funds. Okay, I think I've sort of hit on most of these bullet points here. The Alliance CGS allocation was not expected, and so, you know, I think that, that pretty much I've already talked about. Special Ed, excess cost, again, there's a modest increase statewide, and we expect the reimbursement to remain stable. I've talked about the Family Resource Center, and, and we'll have to get, wait for final word from the state on whether or not there's any possibility that they would fund two grants for Norwalk if they don't have, if all the funding is not otherwise claimed, but, you know, there's a fairly good chance we will need to close one of the two centers this year by the end of December, and Naramac would most likely be the one. Fox Run has a more robust program going at this point, and that's the one that would make sense to keep open. And again, I've already spoken to the Commissioner's Network Grant that we had anticipated was not going to be with us next year. So then, sort of going to my second bullet point, in light of the reductions to state funding that we have absorbed and taken over the last two years, again, going back to my earlier, earlier schedule, you see that the reduction last year to this year is $644,000, and if you compare it to the original budget, it's a reduction of $1,182,000. In light of the fact that we've absorbed those reductions, it is our recommendation that the board formally go back to the city and request a special appropriation in an amount equal to the board request that was tabled from September to deposit the $435,000, $489 in the Board of Education's surplus from last year into a non-lapsing fund.
And I'm pretty sure the Board of Estimate can do that on its own. It's not a special appropriation, it has to go to the council.
Well, we, we did have a discussion yesterday with the mayor and, and Bob Barron about this, and the mayor is supportive of, of this request. Mr. Barron has indicated because of the point that we are at in the fiscal year, the books have been closed, and the audit report is going to be issued that will, within the next few weeks, that will already have the city's assigned fund balance set. They're requesting that we handle this as a special appropriation request, which we understand will be, the mayor's indicated he's supportive of. So, so we would recommend that appropriation. I have indicated here, because I know there had been some discussion earlier among board members about funding a pilot snow removal program, a contracted snow removal program for one of the, for Bryan McMahon High School, and if this request is approved, that could, you know, be funded from that, from that appropriation if, if the board so desires. The remaining funds at this point, we're not prepared to make, you know, any specific recommendation on, but they would be available for unanticipated expenses that may arise during the year.
Did that topic about, we've talked at length with Leisha King and the mayor about snow plowing outsourcing experiment, did that come up in your dialogue at all?
I don't think we actually, I think we missed that one. I don't think we had that discussion with, in the meeting we had with, with the mayor.
I know they are aware of that. You know, we've talked about wanting to use last year's surplus as a way to fund that. I just can't remember if I ever brought that up with Leisha. Okay. See, that's, stop tomorrow.
Yeah, we didn't discuss how we would expend the surplus once it was brought back over.
But did the mayor support having the entire amount transferred to us?
Yes, yes. He clearly supported the $435,000. He felt that, you know, and we had a, you know, frank discussion that we didn't know where the state budget was in September. We didn't know what the impact was going to be on the city. We didn't know what the impact was going to be on the Board of Education, and under that scenario or circumstance, the mayor felt it was appropriate to table the request at that time. But at this point, you know, the city has come through the state budget process in, in pretty good shape, and the Board of Education has come through in, in reasonable shape as well, and, and so there is support for the $435,000.
Right, and so what, how, what was left as the next step?
I guess the next step is we would want the board tonight to, to adopt a resolution.
From the, from the city side, did they just say, "Go through the motions to go through?"
The Board of Estimate has to approve it, County Council has to approve it, lay two-thirds vote, there's a whole big rear of a war.
Right, yeah. The indication is it would be sent to the Board of Estimate at their, December meeting, I believe.
Okay, that's good.
Planning for the worst, if the state pulls the rug out further on PSD, we'll, we'll have to go back and request more or make other adjustments.
Yes, and I, and I did make that point yesterday with the mayor, that again, our assumption here is that we're going to take a 11.8 percent reduction in the PSD Grant, but if it turns out the actual number is, you know, $2 million less than that, then we would certainly need to come back.
So looking at it in sum, it is real money, but it is 0.25 percent of our budget right now, it's on the table.
A quarter of a percent.
Yes, one quarter of 1 percent. So I mean, everything that was going into it before, we landed pretty well so far.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, then, that'll end the work session. We'll go into action items, since we've got them sitting here already. Without objection, we'll go right to item two, which is the approval of the budget reconciliation. The chairman entertained a motion to request a special appropriation from the City of Norwalk in the amount of, page 10. $489 effective so as possible. Is there such a motion?
It's moved.
It's moved, is there a second? Second, Sherrell. Any further discussion? I will proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. Unanimous. Go get them.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Good work, nice presentation. Okay, so next, as approval of personnel items. For some reason, the attachment includes Craig Kreller, so why don't we, why don't we, since he has a separate listing, why not, the chairman entertained a motion to approve two personnel items from the list tonight, which would be the appointment of Kristi Vellara to Twelve Month Supervisor of Special Learning and Student Services, and St. Chul James Lee to Twelve Month Supervisor of Specialized Learning and, is there such a motion?
It's moved.
It's moved, is there a second? Second by Heidi. Any discussion? I'll just note that, you know, this is continuing efforts to beef up our special education group, and I'm very pleased that we are continuing to move forward on our three-year plan.
And Mr. Chair, Director Gorbich, just let me know that we have one of our candidates here with us.
Both, both candidates.
Oh, there you are, hello. I missed you there, yes.
Stand up where everybody's standing, welcome. And, all right, so there's been a motion made and seconded to approve these two appointments. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to a vote. All in favor? This is unanimous, congratulations, love and support. All right, now, we can go on to what will be the last item on the agenda, because number four has been removed, and that's approval to appoint Craig Kreller as interim chief academic officer. Is there a motion? Already moves, seconded. Is there any discussion on?
Where'd he go?
He'll be back.
Timing was impeccable. He's here all night and leaves just in time. So we'll amend the motion to cut the salary about 50 percent.
Free, free, we do it for free.
All right, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any other discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to comment, even though Mr. Kreller is not with us right now, he has done a fantastic job in his current role. It's been a real joy working with him, getting to see the progress he's made in our STEM arena, and looking forward to him being able to continue to move forward the ship that Dr. Connor has brought forward for us. I am very confident in his abilities to keep us moving forward in that direction and be a leader of the team, and, you know, working with, in his current capacities and those that are already there, so I'm excited to see what he does.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to a vote. Well, somebody will tell him when. All in favor?
He's coming, right?
He's coming? We hold off?
Stick your hand up.
We'll hold it like this.
Every second, we deduct 1,000 from the salary.
Salary drops. The longer we have to hold our arms up.
I can do this. Oh my goodness.
I can't make it up.
I think it's fair to say that, oh.
Oh, yes. Saying all these wonderful words about you, you're God.
You're all for bringing it for free, Craig, just so you know.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Kreller's appointment. Again, please indicate, and that is unanimous.
Congratulations.
And now, for the final time on this Board of Education, the chair will recognize Mr. Kusemis.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the final meeting of this term.
So moved, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and thanks again for our participation.